I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome to the June 20th, 2019 planning board meeting for the town of Wakefield. And first on the agenda, our first thing on the agenda is seat alternates Johnny. Would you like to sit in please for Richard? Richard's not gonna make it tonight. Do we have any public comment for anything other than for something that's not on the agenda tonight? Looks like you guys have followed the agenda, nothing from the cameraman. We'll save it for later.
Told me to sit down last time. I do all my comments in writing now.
That's not true, we would never tell you to sit down.
He should.
Maybe get out, maybe sit down. Alright, first on the agenda as far as a public hearing would be a boundary line adjustment plan application submitted by Kerry M. Fox for property owned by Gary and Antoinette Boda, tax map seventy-seven dash sixteen, two-six-two-seven, Province Lake Road, William Sparhock Jr. and Adal Schweitzer, T. Tax Map seventy-seven lot seventeen, Province Lake Road and David and Adeline Schweitzer, Tax Map seventy-seven lot eighteen, two-six-five-five, Province Lake Road. The applicants are requesting an approval of a lot of a boundary line adjustment plan application to consolidate a vacant parcel lot seventy-seven seventeen into adjacent tracks to be split equally between lots seventy-seven dash sixteen and seventy-seven dash eighteen. Go ahead Kerry.
What more should be said?
You just summed it up.
Well. I think it's pretty simple, I hope you do as well.
So we're basically taking three lots and making two lots. A vacant lot, we're splitting it down in the middle and making two lots out of three.
Yeah, so I'd call it a lot line adjustment or a lot consolidation. This is the Boda property, this is the Schweitzer property, this is the lot in between that's in held by William Norwood Sparhock Jr. revocable trust, with different trustees involved, but we're simply gonna take an equitable share or half of that lot and merge it into each of the abutting properties. So you just stand over here so I can read the numbers a little bit.
Probably help model a little bit with the driveway.
Yeah, well, that's true, I mean they were occupying a little bit of this one before, no doubt about that. But on seventy-seven sixteen, originally we've got a lot around forty thousand three hundred and seventy-seven square or just a little under an acre, and then we're gonna add in the twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. So that lot is gonna increase in size to sixty-one thousand nine hundred and seventeen square and get us up to one point four-two acres. And the Schweitzer piece, which is a bigger lot to begin with, fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seven-five or one point two-six, and we add our twenty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-nine, and now that lot is up to seventy-six thousand four hundred and fifteen or one point seven-five acres. And each one of those will increase in road drainage by seventy-two point four-nine feet.
Kerry, if you want, if you could hold it a little sideways and block on the camera and probably like to see it on camera too. So, understand it, I think we understand it. Victor, is the application all complete, everything good there?
Yes, please have been collected, the abut has been notified, public notices been brought.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept the application.
Some moves?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, unanimous.
So, can we go do it, we gotta get up and set some pins to define that new line?
Yeah, I don't see any need for any bond or anything like that, so are you gonna give us certification that it been set? Or are you gonna set them and then put them on the new MyLAW?
I will set them and denote what has been set on the new, on the MyLAW.
Okay. Anything else that we usually, usually ask for? Besides, you wanna make sure the pins are set?
Pins are set, pins are marked on the drawing.
I do have some waivers that I've asked for, kind of typical for a lot line adjustment.
As in, like, the topo and some of those things? Where the wells are and all that stuff?
Uh, given well placement, that type of thing, but I could just...
They're on here anyways.
Did I list them?
Yeah, they're already on there, just tell us where they are. So where are the?
You got them on this one.
Where are the waivers?
I don't know why they're not on that one. You got one back here and one up there.
Oh, as far as well, I was thinking it was the listed waivers I was looking for.
No, no, you don't have that on here.
Yeah, I'm on the plan.
I don't, I think we usually put them on the final though.
Uh, yeah, so last page of the package.
You see it in there? Yeah, so I'm asking for typography, slopes, a brief history of the property, general description of the property, summary of drainage.
Surface drainage.
Sorry, didn't think surface drainage or erosion sediment control were applicable in this, this particular application or project.
Looks like you're taking one non-compliant or non-conforming lot, making...
Just making two lots more conforming.
Two lots more conforming, right.
You know, the, the door of the planning board should be requesting that, you know, some of these existing lots out there are built on to get more tax revenue. But no, what it should be is the people get to do what they want with their land, and that's what they wanna do is, is some, it's having...
Makes sense in this, at least.
Yeah, it really does, you know, and it works excellent. So, what do you guys think about the waivers, they look normal things that we waive, especially for boundary line adjustments?
Seems reasonable.
So entertain a motion to waive four point oh-six, number twelve, number twenty-two, number twenty-three, number twenty-four, and also five point oh-one-zero, to waive those sections of our zoning. Of our, our zoning, I'm sorry. Of our, um...
Are you entertaining it or are you making it?
I am entertaining that motion.
I'll also move that motion.
Five point oh-one-one.
The five point oh-one-one also.
So, second.
So David made the motion, Johnny second it.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, unanimous. Okay. I'll sustain a motion that we approve the lot line adjustments, consolidation for the boundary line adjustment for the Bodes and the Schweitzers. And just the only condition is that the MyLAW shows the pins are to be set or are set.
Some move.
I'll second.
All those in favor, any further discussion, I'm sorry, hang on one second. Open it up to the public, we have any public comment out there about this? Not hearing any? We'll vote the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, unanimous. I know you already had that.
Super, okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too Kerry.
You too Kerry. That's all we have for public hearings, now we have E., we have a conceptual review from Mark LaRoche, Tax Map one eighty-four, Lot seventy-four, Wakefield Road, Landscape Business.
Come on.
Sure.
Um, I don't know, I was invited today by Victor to discuss some property over here by the police station. How much has happened in the past three years?
You were in for a conceptual review like three years ago, right?
Yeah, yes.
I did include the last page of the packet, the minutes from the last meeting.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of those.
Again, on this conceptual review, also nothing was binding, you know, between us. So we're just here for some discussion because you got some information from our code enforcement department that what you were doing there wasn't legal, is that the case type of thing? Or you wanted to come in because you don't have a business yet?
Not yet.
Cause you don't, you don't...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything yet, it might be.
You don't have a site plan or, you don't have a site planned yet, is that the case?
Yeah, I don't know, um, I don't know, I don't know why I'm really here other than three years ago, yeah, I filled out some nice paperwork, a site plan review, let's see, I guess three years ago, yeah, sixteen, almost three years in September, and a building permit, and I left all this information with, at the time I guess the code enforcement, Nate Fogg. And he arranged our review three years ago. He wanted to know what was going on, and from what I understood back then was they wanted to know, I guess, an engineered plan of the property on one piece of paper, cause I have them to scale but on several pieces of paper taken off the Wakefield site for the maps. I show my buildings that I would like to build, some storage areas for mulch and loam and gravel and sand and firewood. The only thing, I had steps planned out at the time. Step one was a shed, seven by seven, I, I got a permit for that, it was like five bucks, I got a receipt here somewhere for it. Um, step two was a twenty-four by forty carport type area to, to house some firewood and my tractors and sanders, whatever, equipment, I guess. Step three was to, my firewood storage rack, I guess was what it is right now. That was actually the first thing that was kinda built, cause I had so much firewood from cleaning the, the property that I didn't know what to do with it, so I, but I didn't finish it, that's why that's step three, it's gotta have a roof over it and whatever, so that's why that's still step three. Uh, step four was putting some concrete blocks in to, you know, separate the materials I'd like to sell. Um, sorta like Randall has down there on Wake, Wakefield Road one fifty-three, south of my property. He's, um, he's got his area set up pretty nice, it's got the dividing concrete blocks that separate his product so they don't mix in with each other and keeps them contained. There's no roof over it like mine, I don't think a roof is necessary over there. Step five would be a sand and salt shed, twenty-four by forty. And what, we discussed that a little bit about how, so that I wouldn't have any outside storage of salt. I didn't wanna lose product and I didn't wanna contaminate the environment. So I was gonna build a, a contained garage, I guess, with three bays, one bay for salt, one bay for sand, one bay for sand and salt mixed, to contain all that, with a roof, you know. Sorta like, I guess, maybe Town Barns have. And step six would be the big building, forty by eighty structure there. It's gonna be two stories, the, the bottom level, which is the ground height that is there now, would be a four bay garage that I would access from around back. The top level, if everything went right, would be level with where my, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but they show, I think the driveway here, the, the height of the driveway would be the height of the top of the building. Not the top roof of the building, but the top floor where you could access it. I had the plans from the, the septic company to the, um, no, those... I fell out in the car. They did the, um, the survey and, um, this property is six acres by the way. Uh, most of it's wet, and there was a wetland scientist, marked everything. I ran into a situation with DES and we took care of that. I had to put up some silt beds and hay bales and throw some seed down and to comply with all that. But I, I had a septic design done up, Paul Dubois out of New Durham, and he, he shows the building, um, I think, do you, do you have a copy of that? I, I don't know why I don't have a copy of it, my file is, must have fell out when I had it. But there was a original, uh...
Original package.
Yeah, that's why, I don't know why you're gonna staple it.
So Mark, what kind of business are you running in?
Land.
I know you came in for a retail and contractor supply business.
Yep, same thing.
Which fits in the zone.
Right, for village zoning.
Yes, so what step are you on there, you mentioned all these steps. It's cause, all as we talked about last time is that you would get an engineer to engineer drainage and stuff for a building and for all your stuff that you're gonna have, so, I mean if you, you're beyond, you know...
Haven't even got any, anywhere with that, unfortunately.
You've done stuff there, so we...
Yeah, I, I cleared the land, not all of it, but most of it. Filled in all the holes from boulders that I removed with the soil that was there. And, um, right now it's storing all the equipment that's gonna be utilized there. I got tractors there, my landscape trailer there, a tent full of, you know, stuff there that's gonna eventually be used for all of the business. Cause I, right now I run the landscape maintenance part of the business. Retail wise, I've had some firewood over there that I, I sell, and some loam. Nothing's being trucked in to sell, mostly just kinda selling what's already there.
So it sounds like you're running at least the landscaping business out of that property without a front.
Not really trying to, but it kinda...
It's like a contractor yard.
Yeah.
So...
Until I can get the monies for loans, the credit approvals, to hire the engineer. I guess that's what stopped me.
So, so to me, I know this is conceptual, right? To me, I think you need to come to the planning board with a site plan application to ask for a permit to do what you're doing there now. Otherwise, otherwise, my hunch is that code enforcement may be knocking on your door soon, asking you to cease and desist of what you're doing there now.
Right.
It's a guess, and again, this is conceptual, right? Like if we can, um, so, my suggestion would be you do that, um, and if you have then plans to expand later, maybe you come to us later, or maybe as part of what you come to us now with is part of your plan, right? Like maybe...
Like phase one.
Phase one.
Right.
It's, that would be what I would, if I run your shoes, that's I think what I would think about doing.
And phase one can be simple, I think the only thing that really gonna set people off would just be like they wanna see a fence for your equipment to be behind, so, one, then people won't see it when they're driving by.
My little fences gonna run over Saturday over there, did you guys all hear about that?
No.
It was an accident, I got a call six-thirty in the morning by the police department and someone took out a section of fence and hit, hit a tree in the property.
It was blown in that corner actually, but, um, so that's the thing, like you just wanna kind of, wherever you're putting your equipment, you might wanna think about shielding it, cause that's, I believe that's in...
Well, that's what my buildings were kinda to do.
Are we not looking at the wetlands?
I, I'm seeing that too, so...
I just don't see, Mark, where you grab any space in order to...
Point five-nine, that's all I use.
That, that's this little corner here?
Yeah, yeah, that's it, that's it, yeah, it's all marked.
And you're able to meet the setbacks, it's a thirty-foot setback from the wetland.
Yeah.
So the other thing, two to think of is you've gotta have a certain amount of dry area for drainage for your impact for the size of your buildings, and, I mean, you're talking some big buildings, so I don't know if you're gonna get that with the dry land you have, cause you cannot count the wetlands.
Yeah, I don't know any of that, I guess, um, you know, all I know is I get the, had the approved, I guess it expired now, the septic design for the building, um, I guess they must have approached whoever, Paul Dubois, approached, um...
I'm not saying you don't have it, you just wanna make sure you meet the requirement.
Right, right.
There's, there's a...
I guess at the time it must have, so I would assume right now for the big building that I wanna build, you know what I mean, I don't, I don't know what you're asking as far as with the amount of buildings I want, or...
So, it's, so it goes off a square footage, so, you just say you, you got your forty by eighty, right? But then you're talking about, so whatever area you have getting shed off, there's a certain amount of area you are required for your runoff.
Right, so, so you wanna, what, continue to have a certain pervious surface on the property? And by you putting a building there, by you putting in driveways or such, that's gonna take away from that square footage. So, I don't know what the calculation is.
Yeah, I think that's where we stopped it before as far as to get the engineered plan.
Yeah, so...
And that just takes money as all.
Like this, this land back here will, will help you out, I just don't know how much that's gonna help you and I don't know what the total dry land is.
Right, right, yeah.
So I think there's that that's to consider, what Victor said as far as like the setbacks, do you have enough?
Right.
Maybe you do, right, but, um, you just need to, you've, you're dealing with a relatively small piece, right? Compared to the, to the entire...
Well, it's six acres, yeah.
Six acres, but where the...
The point five-nine, that's...
Correct, right?
That's the, the area that's usable, I guess, with the setbacks.
Right, and so there's...
Unincluded.
You know, there's quite a bit of things that you would like to do, right? Some pretty big buildings and storage areas, so you need to take that into account, right? And make sure you have the right setbacks.
Yep, yeah, that's pretty much where we're at before, I think, with the, the idea of getting a...
The bark mulch piles and stuff like that, that's not gonna come against you, that'd be on the open. Salt has to be undercover.
Yep, yep, yeah. Yeah, that's where I was kinda at and where it's gonna be a substantial price to a engineer to, to, to make all these measurements you're discussing. I think, uh, you know, when I foot the bill for that, then we're gonna have exact numbers and we might have to shave a building out of there.
Well, this, this image that we have on the town tax map, you can't go by this being a hundred percent...
Yeah, you can't, right, yeah.
Right, so that's why you need the surveyor to come in to tell us, hey, it's not here, it's over here, or...
Right, yeah, this mark is, this mark is out there.
It could absolutely go the other way of what's shown on here, cause there's other lines that...
Yeah. And it's getting bigger, cause as the beavers dam up, see, there's a river that goes through.
Yeah.
And it, it's backing up.
The hardware store...
So actually, probably I've lost twenty feet just in these three years. So how do I resolve that? And then I got this storm drains all dumping right across here, that apparently they're supposed to be along the track. According to the DOT, it's supposed to be the access for all this storm water to go, but it, it got blocked. So a lot of it came across my property, so I'm kinda losing some. I don't know, you know, this isn't an exact picture, but that's kinda what's happening over there. So, and I told DOT, I says, I don't mind, put the culvert across my property and dump it onto, near the tracks or whatever to divert your water, that you're kinda using my six acres as a storm runoff at this point, you know, I, I get, water's gotta go somewhere. But, you know, we got issues, like I said, beavers damming it up, so now it's all backing up, you know. The police station here, they ended up filling in, uh, land, and they kept filling, that's why this line's actually a straight line, but they actually filled, and then they use this access road that I got right here to get onto the train tracks for the snowmobile and four-wheeler trails. So they kinda...
That was shut down a couple of years ago.
Approaching a little there, which, they're, they're not gonna have any, any worry.
That, that used to actually be for the old business back there, it was a railroad...
Yeah.
Offshoot there, and the coal, you can see there's, it's full of coal everywhere, that was dumped off a lot.
But they, they're high enough where they don't have to worry about all this water no more, but there's a culvert here under that road that's blocked. And I don't know how to go about, you know, if I gotta get over there with a chainsaw and un, open it back up, you know, I mean, or do I call an environmentalist? You know, I don't know any suggestions on how to open up that, because I would imagine it's gonna cause damage to the train tracks at some point over there, cause that whole, my whole property line follows the train track, and there's a culvert under the train track with some nice granite, um, blocks that kinda could get washed out at some point, I'd be kinda worried about that too.
This is the, the brook that comes out of a rubble lake, comes right across and goes across under the railroad tracks. And that's where it's dammed up, is it dammed up on your property or the background?
Right there, that bridge where it goes under the railroad tracks, the beavers have been doing that, but the hardware store's been doing a pretty good job trying to keep that open, cause you can see here, it goes right, the wet, goes right, I mean, you know the area.
But there's also under, under that road that crosses my property, it's the, another one, similar to that other one. Cause I think this other one, we put a, with the four-wheeler club, we put a, a bridge uh, uh, parallel with that, this other one, that I think they maintained from the hardware store. So I don't know, that's, that's that part of it. So that's where I'm at, I think, as far as, you know, I gotta get the engineered plan, I do realize that, it's gonna be a few thousand dollars. I've been trying to get a, some estimates on builders for the, the main building, I mean I've, numbers way all over the road that, I mean, they go anywhere from seventy thousand up to five hundred thousand. Had to tell one guy I didn't want gold nails, you know, I mean, I just, so it's money, you know, it all amounts to money. You know, I think where we're at right now, even today, from what I understand, is still gotta get the engineered plan.
Right, well, plus you, you, you know, you're running the business out of there right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you gotta come in with something.
Yeah, so a contractor's storage permit, I would think.
You're gonna, something that fits our zoning, you gotta get right there, come in with something, you gotta come to the planning board with some kinda site plan for something that fits the zoning for that spot, or you're gonna get shut down.
Right, so what do we got, here's the planning board, what do we, um, what's the, uh, what's fit there? We have storage of equipment. Contractors yard?
I think the only thing a contractors yard, you need a house, you need a house, so. You gotta have a house.
Always gotta be a house involved.
In order to have a contractor yard, you gotta have a house, and that's kinda where you have it, you don't have a house.
Right, right.
Well, listen, I have taken a look and I can't see it fitting...
Well, listen, I have taken a look and I can't see it fitting in with what we have in here.
That's why you came in last time with the retail contractor sales.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do, yeah.
That's what you gotta come in for.
Just keep going in.
You gotta come in for that, but. Whether the retail's small or large or something, but you gotta come in with something that. And so we can notify about it and.
So then we just come up with a permit for the retail then?
Well, you gotta come up with something.
Or not the contractors, yeah, the permit for the retail. Right?
Is the zoning on it? So in the retail sales, maximum twenty-five thousand square feet. Permitted in village residential.
But I mean, it's hard to be a landscaper in a retail sale, you gotta have. You gotta, if you're gonna be in a retail sale, you gotta sell something, you can have equipment there, then you can have stuff there, then, but you gotta have.
Well, that's the thing is. You know, I saw the loam, the rocks, the firewood, I mean, everything out of there. Some compost, but it's like.
You need a permit to do that.
So that would be step one to just get the retail permit.
You get, you gotta have something in order to keep operating out of there.
So, retail permit. Some sounds simple enough, and then we can go with the engineered plan for the buildings.
Need a retail permit, that's. What you're gonna. That's the type of business you have to have, is a retail. Supply. But you gotta come in and apply for a site plan, whether it be a minor site plan or a major site plan. For retail sales.
Mark, your problem, wetlands, pretty heavy going, sure.
Well, I don't know. I don't know. Is it crowding or is it, is it using what's already been marked off and abide and by the setbacks that the town? Makes, I guess? I wouldn't say that's crowding, I would say that's utilizing the available space. Crowding would be, to me, pushing into them, I would guess, or. Something of that nature. I would think, I mean, there's only point five nine acre out of six acres. So I would guess that whole six acres is designated, you know. Protected. Therefore, we had the what, thirty foot setback for wetlands, and that's where we come back in the thirty feet. So after I come in my thirty feet, my twenty feet that the town wants for the road. I have point five nine acres that I can do something with, I thought, am I wrong in thinking that?
That's where the engineer plan comes in, where they come and show what the markers are.
From the center line, yeah, and then the town wants another twenty feet, right? Is that what I understand?
It's a twenty foot setback from your property line, the front setback you're talking about?
What we were talking about.
The state hasn't, the state's right away there is bigger than the twenty foot the town requires.
The state's twenty-five feet on each side of the yellow line, let's say. So basically where I put that.
Property line. Whether, it doesn't matter whether the state's twenty feet, twenty-five feet, there's a property line. And we have a setback from that property line in this particular zone where you can have a building. Okay, but it doesn't mean that he can't, you know, mow all the way out to the property line or anything like that. But you, of course, you must have a state driveway permit or.
So but with that being said, if, if this is your wetland and this is, you know. The area that you have, you have a thirty foot area here. Setback from the wet. And you're saying you're not in that thirty foot.
Point five nine, if that's the exact measurements out here, cause this is already marked. And my salt fence, excuse me, is um, is up here.
Is that the third?
And so the markers are at the. Right, that's, we're already, in other words, if we walked over there today. I would show you the markers are thirty feet away from where I'm doing anything, so.
So that's the type of stuff you're gonna.
Twenty foot, I thought, or sounded like. Was after they get there fifty feet wide, cause I think it's sixty-six. Feet wide for the train tracks is for my property markers. So then, and then, so where, cause it's pie shaped, so where they came in from the road. You know, twenty-five feet from the center.
Do you have, is there?
There's pins there, and they're referenced through land care and through the wetlands map.
Along the road here, are there, there's pins. So that's your property line. So, I'm sure you have a property line here along the railroad tracks.
So what you're saying to me, it sounds like. I end up not having a twenty foot setback after their edge of right of way.
No, it's from your property lines.
From your property line.
Oh, alright, well then.
It's gotta be back at least twenty feet from that, if that's the, that's the uh.
Was it different from the front and the rear?
Thirty, thirty in the rear.
No, so it's thirty from wetlands, but if there was no wetlands, I think it's only ten feet.
Ten it is.
Right, I think I show all that on this one. Alright, here we go, this makes more sense. So where it's not wet, where I'm using, where, where you see everything is and where I wanna put a carport, there's no wetlands. There's a train tracks over there, there's a barbed wire right here, this is one fifty-three. So right now you'll see a, a rack with, without a roof. So there's ten foot setback here, because there's the no wetlands, now I see what you're saying, cause it turns and then it turns in the wetlands, I see what you're saying. So all this is dry land. Um, so the firewood rack there, there's a tent there, you'll see, it's ten feet. There's a plastic shed that I get the permit for, that's ten feet, and then the carport I wanna build. Um, will be ten feet, twenty-four by forty.
This is the railroad track?
Yes, and then this is the road, and that's my pie shaped piece.
And where would uh forty by eighty go?
Forty by eighty? Forty by eighty is um. I don't have it. For some reason, I uh, probably had another folder. It shows, I'd have to, I thought we had it in the file.
Building on your uh plan. Being expensive one.
So that, it shows, it's the one that's already. Kinda what I went for first, so I have a septic permit. So the septic permit shows that building on me, but I don't know. Show it to you. This, this hand drawn one, I guess, so it would go in between. So s- if you go, that's like your town have this.
Be down in the back.
So you, you could see the, the um, the wet. Lands, see this circle right here? So that forty by eighty building's going right in between, right after this twenty-four by forty. In other words, you guys see the eighteen wheeler trailer there? Eighteen wheeler trailer is the exact corner of that is where the exact um. Corner of the building would be, that eighteen wheeler trailer is only eight feet wide, so imagine that forty feet wide. And it, the eighteen wheeler trailer is fifty-three feet long, imagine that eighty feet long. So forty by eighty, and then just imagine it taller. So the basement would be fourteen foot walls, and then the top floor would be fourteen foot walls. I think the total um is thirty-one feet, which falls under the um. Town building code, I think it's thirty-five feet, so it's thirty-one feet total. So, that, that part I all knew.
I think the building code is thirty-five, can't be more than thirty-five feet, but that's the average height around the whole building.
Right, and this is gonna be thirty-one, it's fourteen of fourteen, plus the, the pitch of the roof, I think. Yeah, it's thirty-one. So, that's, and then, so on this. The um. I guess I would have to apply again for um. The uh septic permit that expired last August. To renew it, I guess. So that would show, you know, the exact measurement and footage and everything, I wish I had that today to show you.
I think the first thing I'd do is get the wetland survey, so you have an absolute. You can and can't.
Yeah, it, it has been.
I, I'm not saying it hasn't, I'm just saying we need to see it.
Right, 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 right.
A site plan, right.
You gotta come in with a site plan.
Right, the engineered plan.
You run a business in town, write a site plan. And you're gonna get. If you're putting all your stuff there.
If you're gonna get an engineered plan, it'll show where everything is if it'll fit.
I mean, I spent the fifteen hundred for the plan through Paul Dubois, the septic designer that had. This plan that sounds fictitious now. Um, I'm sorry about this, but um. Everything, yes, everything fit at the time of conception when I bought this property. I, I, before I purchased this property, I talked extensive with Nate Fogg, the. Code enforcement officer at the time, before I purchased it, I told him what I wanted to do. He says, yep, village, oh, you can't do much here, I says, yeah, but I wanna sell mulch and stuff, I said, Ed Randall told me he's gonna retire. And I'm gonna put business there, so what he's selling, his son don't wanna take over his business, so I said, alright, well. So Nate says, yeah, well, you could put six units there, I says, six units, hmm, I'm built to buildings. Might even rent out six units, cause you got six acres, right? Even though they're wetlands. Because the original plan for this property in septic design was for a six unit condos or something. But what I wanna do is have four car bases. And two uh storage in a office, and then I gotta store my. Tractors and stuff outside, so that's my six units, I says, oh, that makes sense, sounds like six units to me, right? Does that work? One unit per acre, I mean, does that make sense?
It only works if you don't have wetlands.
Oh, see, that changed too then?
No, that didn't change.
That didn't change? Not saying building on six acres.
I don't know.
No, it's, it's. The, the, the density of it, you can build, you could subdivide it into six acre lots. Six one acre lots, if it didn't have weapons. But it has wetlands, and wetlands are excluded from that calculation.
Whereas it's a consolidated unit, I guess it's sorta like um. What the gentleman in, was just running into combining lots. Cause they're gonna come in here for some plans, I can bet, but um. So when they consolidate, the, the lot, say they had six acre lots, six. Separate one acre lots, and they consolidate into one piece, you can build. One unit per acre, so that's a separate acre. One unit per acre.
In your zone, I believe, in the village residential, you could do one acre.
So then I can't even build one building and a half an acre, is kinda what I just.
Right, you know, you have your primary structure, then you have your accessory structures.
So you maybe could qualify and build a home there and have a contractor yard. But again, the contractor yard has some restrictions too, you gotta have some screening.
That's, yeah.
Is there, do we have a restriction on how many buildings? I don't think.
I, I don't. I think you could have multi-family.
You can have multi-family, you can have multiple buildings on it, but you still have to stay under that impervious surface. Which is what's gonna catch you. If you start putting multiple driveways in, multiple buildings, cause a gravel driveway is not considered pervious. So, you've gotta kinda plan it out, so everything kinda works in your favor. Like this stretch back here is gonna be your best bet to keep for keeping that drainage available. And then everything down here around the wetlands, you wanna use that as much as possible.
So basically get an engineer over there and draw that out, in the meantime, I gotta get a permit to have the business there.
You gotta have a site plan.
So was, is that uh, not this paper I put in? Site plan review, is that what kinda we're doing today? So we're doing this again? Conceptional review. So we need a. Site plan drawn up by an engineer to bring it in.
Site plan application. Showing your design and also stormwater management.
So, site plan review application, what's that paper look like you have?
That's the one you have.
So retail of landscapes, so this paper needs to be what? Given to you guys to decide if we're gonna decide on it, is that what you, I don't know.
Right, you got a zoning book, and you look at the regulations, and you fill that out, and your engineer or your surveyor, like the guy that was here earlier. You hire him, he does a site plan for you. And you draw it up. The zoning, and you gotta apply for that, and we gotta notify the abutters, and you gotta come in and see if. And he'll help you out.
You've got an application.
And what's not approved.
Yeah, this is all, all submitted to the town, yeah.
It was submitted?
Yeah, it's all here.
So all the abutters were notified?
No, they, 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 the town drops the ball on it, I did.
Okay, so. Where at, is we're at a preliminary discussion again.
Again, three years later.
We're only here three years later, hang on, we're here three years later, cause you.
I haven't finished doing the, the.
Town didn't drop the ball on anything here.
So the engineered plan. The funds, but in the meantime, now what you're saying is. That nothing can be done over there. For retail, because we don't have.
A site plan.
So in order to run it the way it exists now, all I would need to do is submit. A site plan review application and just say, hey, I got some mulch over there, and I got some loam over there and firewood over there and. We're gonna leave it exactly like it is and not, and then next year, we're gonna part two, come back with a building plan?
Yeah, you can modify your site plan. You gotta come in with a site.
You don't have to put all the big buildings in to get started.
Prove that you're not encroaching underneath wetlands with what you're doing now. And with us just looking at that from the road, we can't tell. We don't have a survey of the land. So I think that's.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it makes sense, yeah.
We keep saying engineer, but surveyor. Surveyor's gonna lay it out for you, he can figure it out, you might need.
In other words, just give you a copy of the original.
Might need to hire an engineer, depending on the scope of what you're gonna submit. For drainage. It might be something the surveyor can do if you're not, if. Might be something a surveyor can do if you're not disturbing a tonic area.
I think that's the one showing buildable spot. From. I think that's the one, I have a bigger one.
You must have the full version. Dates and times and when all.
Cause it's uh.
See it was done by Nantech.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we went through all this. Uh, it was marked out. Uh it was marked out, I don't know.
Let me show Tom here. Does look like it's annulations and whatnot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some topo's been done, cause you did septic design, so they had. But that doesn't mean that that that's not a site plan.
Right, 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 yeah, you wanna see what the business on in.
Yes, you have to show the business, you gotta show your driveways, you gotta show drainage, you gotta show.
Signage, fencing.
Right, yeah, alright, I see what you're saying, yeah. So the these plans that I put in, showing the driveway, the building. But now, see this is, I just wanna clarify, that's why I think. We have to have the drainage, that's what everybody's worried about, is that what I understand? Cause it 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 has everything to scale.
As as you move forward in each building you do with a roof, once you start adding impervious surfaces, you need to be able to show that each step you have.
The the wetlands company back involved and show this square footage of this roof, this square footage of this roof.
Surveyor.
Right.
So you have to hire a surveyor.
Yeah.
And he'll locate your wetland flags or he'll help you out with the wetland, get a wetland guy to.
Okay.
To flag the wetland and he's gotta locate the wetland, he's gotta put it on a real drawing to scale. And show the impermeable area and make sure it's not, and make sure it meets the zoning.
Right.
Make sure what you're doing there meets the zoning and you gotta come in, because it doesn't fit under landscaping. It's gotta fit in under the retail, you gotta sell something, they gotta show us what you're gonna sell.
Right.
And go over it and your buddies will come out and talk talked about it.
Yeah.
They're gonna wanna see store hours and.
Oh, yeah.
All of it.
Yeah.
And and things that you probably wanna consider is potentially screening, fencing.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sort of like vegetative.
And you're in the village district, which is architectural controls or not.
That's why I didn't want no big gaudy looking building, it's gotta fit the nature of.
Small strain uh screens there, but if you get into like actually screening material with a.
Yeah.
Bigger machine, yeah.
Yeah, no, you that's for that um uh filling in my. Taking out my um. Right, no, that's not what we're gonna process material there, we're gonna have material delivered in there. So, yeah, see a lot of these answers, I guess I probably already put them in.
Yeah.
Hours of operation, seven AM to seven PM. So this application was never uh. It's still in the file, I would guess, on this property, but it was never um.
With. Yeah. You gotta have money and you said notify the. Has to be complete or it's not.
That's why I didn't mean to offend, but that's why I meant, it seemed like the ball got dropped on my application submissions. That's all, cause I did have. Right, they were asking for a a in on one, my understanding was, put it on one piece of paper now. With an engineer to do it and I says, yeah, it's gonna be expensive, it's gonna take a while.
Surveyor.
Right.
Your surveyor will tell you if you need an engineer.
Right.
But you gotta have a surveyor, most, some engineers are surveyors, they survey it and they survey, locate what you have over there. Locate distances, your driveways. Gotta have a plan that's certified by a surveyor.
Okay.
And he'll tell you if you need an engineer to engineer drainage or he has explain.
Uh Nate Fogg noted that we need to.
Yeah, that's that's where I'm at.
So.
Yeah, I just haven't afforded to uh.
And again, like we talked about, this can be done in steps, like if you were looking at like the model that Randall's has, like Randall's, they don't have. So if you're gonna go after a model like that, then your surveyor slash engineer could help you. Make sure that you had a site plan describing that type of business, right? That that would be, that potentially could be step one.
Sure, Mike Garify would also be able to help you with the planning of it, how to lay it out.
So you wouldn't necessarily have to do all of it right now, right? Cause that could be more money to to start engineering, uh a couple of big buildings and so forth.
So the other thing too is once you drop your plan on what you're gonna do. And you pay your fees and everything, then Mike Garify's gonna review it. He's open to call.
Who's?
Mike Garify is our con- planning consultant, so you can call him and, you know, he'll give you some feedback, which way to go to help you get it through with the zoning we have.
Right.
You know, if you're missing something, he'll point it out, whoa, well, this, you can only do this because of this rule.
I think I'd be careful, I I want the guy reviewing it not to be the one that's getting paid to do the work.
When you when you submit it.
Yeah.
You know, and he goes over. He can give you some pointers to what to do. Well, the board too.
So.
Yeah, but I think it'd be a conflict of. Hires him and he's.
Oh, no, Mike wouldn't hire him, you can't hire him, that's not what Dave said.
No, he's already been paid.
You just say a call for some.
So you can call, so once you submit it, Mike has a chance to go over it, so Mike, what did you think, is there something I should change before we submit it to the board?
Not not submit it to the board, and under Mike's review.
Yeah, right, right, and I.
Under Mike's review, your surveyor or yourself could call Mike. If Mike has situation or Mike might even call you guys, what are you guys doing there, you know, let's don't meet the zoning. You know, if you did this, if you change this around over here and put this over here, Mike meet the zoning, he might give you that type of advice.
So as part of your application fees, it includes money that is spent on our town planner. Looking at your plan.
Right.
Right, to review it, to make sure that it it meets.
There's a fee for that.
Correct.
So what's that fee, you know?
It depends if it's a minor or major, I mean, it's usually around one fifty for a minor. I think that's where.
I think they used to say twenty five dollars three years ago, I probably should have uh given the twenty five bucks three years ago, huh?
We're talking about, that's just the engineer review, there's a lot more money for about notifications and the applications.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take off all the layers. And we're gonna go with the first conceptual review, can I have the sale of mulch, loam, firewood? Materials there.
If that's what you wanna do, then that would be a good approach.
We'll go with the building, we'll go with the later on in life.
Well, that's.
Took three years to come back here again.
Totally your option, yeah, but you're back here again because you're talking to our code enforcement department. Cause they're asking you questions because.
No, I haven't talked to me about this property. Just him, he just says, here, you wanna have a plan? A conceptual review, I says, oh, okay, so now this is the first I'm hearing that there might be an issue.
Alright, while you look at the the minutes of the meeting.
Yeah.
You know you need a site plan.
So that's what we need.
You need a site plan, to and to continue operate there, you gotta have one.
Right, so I understood it as because of all the buildings or whatever, that I needed that engineer plan that. So now I just gotta show the property on the where I wanna store everything. To have my retail there, that's all. That's sounds a lot easier and a lot cheaper than the original full plan. That I was told I needed to begin with.
Well, because you wanted the building at that time. Wanted, now you, you know, we just mentioned, cause it's why we're having a conceptual review. Again, nothing's here binding, we could tell you, okay, commit one thing, doesn't mean you're gonna get it.
Right.
Either, you gotta have. It's gotta meet the zoning and we gotta see, and it's gotta be, it's gotta be the scale, it's gotta be a certified plan. To because you have close wetland and you have your boundary line issues that need to show the setbacks. We need to see something to scale and see the setback.
Yeah. Okay.
And it's all in our zoning, what you need is right in the zone.
Yeah.
And they all know it, well, most of you guys know it.
They downside it.
White Mountain Survey.
Land Tech.
Land Tech, you know, they all. They all know how to do it, cause they all, every town has zoning.
Just about every town. So we have to go with one of those companies.
Just many companies.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you may have, it may be on file at the Rockingham Register of D, the survey of the land, which I think it might be.
Yeah.
You know, maybe, cause that what maybe your septic designer used. I talked to the septic designer, he might know a guy that he likes, that, you know, you can go with your septic design and. 配置that in with your with your stuff that you're doing now.
Yeah.
Cause he's already located some stuff out there. And he may have located stuff that are on an already done survey.
Right.
Especially of that section, you know, we uh probably wouldn't have to show the whole survey of the whole six acres.
Yeah, I was extensive on that, cause there is, like I said, there's there was a six unit with a different septic design. Done by s- the same septic designer, he gave me the other copy too. From whoever wanted to build there before.
The land's probably been surveyed.
Yeah.
So now a surveyor's gotta take that, go out there and.
On the paper and put what I wanna put on it. Well, it was the bank, bank owner. It was uh what was it, Charles McLaughlin, I think owned a bunch of.
That's what I thought. That's exactly what I thought. Okay. Next, you good?
So we got, yeah, just make sure, get the uh plan drawn up. Submit that, we should be good. Alright, is there a time limit?
Soon.
I get going on something, so.
Alright, thanks.
Approval minutes to June sixth. Minute. We have Doug was here. I was here. Dave was out here, Dave was here.
I think we have enough, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve the June six minutes, as written.
Can we read the public comments? Any further discussion? Did you guys make a motion, right?
Yeah.
I made a motion, seconded by uh Dave. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the story with Nancy Spencer, where's she at? Haven't heard from her. Huh? Haven't heard from her since. Yeah, but I, she's out west somewhere.
Yeah, Arizona. Pretty much permanently.
Do we have any public comment? Yes, Jim.
I just would like to challenge the board a little bit about what I just experienced as a citizen.
Okay.
Um a good reason for our zoning is to keep an equitable application to all. That everybody's to be treated the same. And I don't believe that there's any loopholes that allow people to just go on their property that they bought and do whatever they want. For three years.
That's why.
Without any permits.
That's why he's here now.
Yes, my only issue, I understand the board wants to work with people and help them as much as you possibly can and I applaud that. My only issue is that what I just saw happen was, this person still doesn't have a deadline. Of when to come to you with a site review, and I would have thought that would have been appropriate, that he's had three years. He has not basically completed what everybody else needs to do. And and he just left without any action by the board saying, we need to have this by a specific time.
So we're not code enforcement, code enforcement tomorrow or five minutes from now can go and shut him down, that's not us. We we help the town make the zoning, we're not the ones that enforce it. I I believe that would essentially fall under the selectmen where code enforcement works for the selectmen, I get it.
So it's not your position to.
And I totally understand, like, so I'll be brutally honest here and I was gonna, I was gonna bite my tongue. But he said a few times that, you know, there was, uh you know, the past three years, you know, the ball was dropped. To me, the ball was dropped, and please don't take this the wrong way, by code enforcement for not enforcing that. Right, so not that the ball was dropped on this board for for not seeing his application through. But the ball was dropped at some level of the town for not enforcing something that somebody doesn't have a permit for, right?
Okay, so this is.
But I do think though, I I understand what you're saying too, but I think. There's still a level of what people can do on their own land without a permit, without needing a permit.
Yeah, right.
Has he crossed the the line?
Open flag, I don't, you know, he said he was.
We don't, we as a board don't go out looking for people that cross the line, we we don't do that.
That's code enforcement.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And the only other comment I would make is that, uh I think you referred to some minutes, the earlier minutes or something.
Sure.
We have five years worth of meetings online available to view, and if this was at a public meeting where there was a prior. That should be available to see what was actually said, I know the minutes are the actual public record. But uh we should be able to get that video for you.
Well, I'd just like to say, the previous code officer was the one who started this. Other than a letter and asking him come to the planning board for conceptual, that's all I could find. So I had conversations, the concern with us was he's storing fertilizer, he's storing salt. And it's wetlands, and everything is, you know, it's not on pervious surfaces, so that was the concern. So we did have the discussion and we made the decision to have him come to planning board again. Gave him kind of a last shot to come here, but I agree with Jim.
I don't wanna talk about. Jim's comment, but I.
I, we are making a attempt, I'd just like to say that on a part of the town as far as code enforcement with Mistola Roach.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Not hearing any. Um. Of course, our next meeting will be July eleventh, not July fourth.
Okay.
You sure?
So we're gonna, yes, we're gonna meet.
Be quiet.
We're gonna have two meetings in July, July eleventh and July eighteenth.
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll be just back to back.
We got approval from uh Priscilla for that. So you, Priscilla, you said Nancy wasn't coming back?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think uh I heard she was delayed a little bit, cause she may have broke. Uh or her, one of her limbs, her leg or something, it's possible or something, she was a little delayed coming back, but supposed to be here pretty soon. I I was thinking by the end of June, she was gonna be home, for sure. That's.
Make a motion, Oger.
I'll second.
Unanimous.